I beg God in heaven, we just thank you for tonight, and we thank you for the weather, and we just thank you for this day, and we pray for these people who are going to govern over the city, and pray that you give them knowledge and wisdom and patience, and I pray that we remember to be kind to one another. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Let's just signify that the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any changes to the agenda?
We do, we're actually adding a couple of items from what was published under Action there at your desk. One will be change order one for the Sixth Street parking lot, and the other will be for authorization for water main repair at Nineteenth and Lincoln. Those will be added to the action, and then our presenter for the housing study is also running a little bit behind, so if we could just adjust the agenda, go ahead and start with the public budget hearing and work for our other items, and then when she gets here, we'll start the housing study.
I'm going to approve the agenda as amended.
So good. There's been a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Commissioner Lambert, and the second by Commissioner Hatch. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. It's public comment time. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. Please request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any public comments? Okay, moving on to our 2023 public hearing.
We were able to stay at the revenue neutral rate of fifty-two point three one seven mils, which is a decrease from last year of almost five mils. We were able to increase our equipment reserve and capital improvement transfers this year. We kept our allocation to outside entities the same as last year, but we did add five thousand dollars for OCCK transportation. We have our longevity pay increases worked into the budget and a COLA of four point seven percent, and a nine percent increase in health insurance was estimated, and that has been passed on nine percent on employee rates and employer rates. And our guaranteed general fund reserve at the end of the year, shown on there is four hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and fifty. That should be over eight hundred thousand at the end of the year, at the end of next year as an estimate. And so everything else is as discussed in the budget meetings, and I recommend that you approve this.
Yeah, can I ask you a quick question? You said we kept every entity the same. Didn't we, did we fund the library at their total request?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, the ones that are special allocation to others, they're their own budgeting stuff, so yes, they are as they request.
Awesome. Thanks for the clarification. No other comments? We will consider this budget hearing closed. Moving on to the approval of the 2023 budget.
I move to 2023.
So.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Wentz, and a second by Commissioner Lambert to approve the 2023 budget as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Minutes of the July eighteenth twenty-two, twenty twenty-two special meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the July eighteenth and July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
So, there's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, and a second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of the July eighteenth and July twenty, twenty twenty-two meetings. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number fourteen.
I'm going to approve appropriation ordinance fourteen.
So, there's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, and a second by Commissioner Hatch to approve appropriation ordinance number fourteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ordinance twenty twenty-two thirty-one ninety, the Uniform Public Offense Code.
Okay, so every year, we have to renew these, the Uniform Public Offense Code and then the standard, easiest thing to do instead of making massive cut and paste job is I actually just, the changes every year, they send us what little changes they've made. We also then can make changes to a certain extent to different things. So what, the big one we did this year was the golf cart ordinance. So that actually is replacing the previous one that had been renewed every year and somehow was in conflict with some other things, so that's all been cleaned up. The new ordinance will be on books, so we'll be able to enforce that. So other than that, we just need to go ahead and we'll do two separate motions and vote on it. One for the public defense code and then one for the standard traffic.
I'm going to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two thirty-one ninety.
Second, there's a motion by Commissioner Lambert, and a second by Commissioner Wentz to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two thirty-one ninety. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Twenty twenty-two thirty-one ninety-one standard traffic ordinance.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two thirty-one ninety-one standard traffic ordinance.
Okay.
A motion by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Lambert to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two thirty-one ninety-one. Is there any further discussion? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sixth Street parking lot change order.
Sixth Street parking lot construction's been going pretty good. We had some small hiccups during the grading process for the parking lot. They ran into some concrete debris that's either been knocked over from the demo projects or areas beforehand, in a, in turn that made, or why it ended up having to put a lot more crushed rock in than estimated, as well as Hoods was going to use a trenching machine, and they couldn't use a trenching machine anymore because of the chunks of concrete and random debris that was in the way. So they ended up having to use a backhoe or a mini X instead, which costs more labor and time. So recommended action, City Commission to approve the signing of the change order number one, an amount of two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixteen cents to be paid for out of CFP.
I have a question. Is that because of the demolition that wasn't done properly just within the last few months?
That can explain as it was just a spot in between the two houses that was not excavated.
Yes, so it's likely that it was stuff that was already there. We couldn't foresee being there.
So two houses were cleared and excavated, but it was the space between that maybe lingering driveway or something.
Next time we have to debate two houses next week, I wish we probably go ahead and excavate the space in between just to be sure.
Well, next time we know, right?
I offer us mayor to sign the change order number one, an amount of two thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars sixteen cents to be paid for out of the CFP.
Second, there's a motion on four by Commissioner Lambert, and a second by Commissioner Wentz. Is there any further discussion? None. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Nineteenth and Lincoln Water Main Crossing.
Since our repair, we had Nineteenth Street north of Lud Road. This last winter, we found a leak, and what we did, we just shut two valves off and isolated it, so it needs to be repaired because there's two dead ends now. And we're hoping to do that with the south development project to get costs down, so. We recommend entering into agreement with corporate professional services with Campbell and Johnson, an amount of seventy-two fifty.
So we're hoping that when we do the utility work, bringing the water main up, that this is something that could be, into that.
Yes.
Help reduce mobilization costs.
There are, there are eleven different other crossings of the highway, so this, they weren't replaced in the nineteen ninety-seven highway project, so this is probably something that may or may not happen again in other places. Just happened.
So when will we see this actually, yeah, then when we, when we process that other project down the road? So this is just for the engineering.
Yeah, the seventeen fifty is, is the approval that you would go today, the engineer's estimate is around fifty thousand, but Campbell and Johnson will bid it out as an ad alternate at the same time that they bid out the, the other work. So then we'll have actual cost, and we'll have you come back and approve the actual construction contract at that time.
There, there is a couple of things on that estimate that I foresee not being on there, so.
So, would there, how many crossings are there that?
Eleven.
Do we have any way to, an idea as to whether it would be prudent to take care of them? Or just wait for them to go?
Yeah, that'd probably be better. And, do you know that, when they did that, I don't know why they didn't bore under every intersection, probably was cost back then too, but they did do one thing correct. They put a valve on each side so we could isolate every one of them. They just, they had to do that.
Sure.
So, and it doesn't cause too big of a problem, it just, we might have some dirty water there until we get, get them fixed. And that's what could happen here.
I move to enter into an agreement with Campbell and Johnson, an amount of seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
There's a motion by Commissioner Hatch, a second by Commissioner Wentz on the floor. Is there any further discussion? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Managers report.
The, um, commissioners, we did have a change following our recent inspection by, again, Christian goes about this a little bit this afternoon. Interest company comes around every year, they take a look at all of our buildings, and they give us some feedback on things that we're doing well, things that we're not doing well, that would affect our property insurance or liability insurance. And one of the things they asked us to do was to close our tree limb dumping site to the public. So we had been letting people put tree limbs in a pile at the city shop, when the gates were open during business hours. We can no longer do that. And so the, the interest company believes that's a little bit of a risk. The city is going to retain their KDH permit for a burn pile, and the reason we're going to retain that is because after storms, we still go around and pick up limbs along curbs, so that, so we both still have a pile back there, but it's stuff that we're picking up. In the future, if we were to decide to bid out some tree work, say trimming some trees over streets, we would probably still allow that contractor to haul to our site and we would burn it. But as far as the public, we have to be able to close those gates, so there are some signs up there now, the gate is shut, so people cannot get there. So if you have any complaints or anything, that's the reason for it.
Hello? That's it for now. Is there anything else?
Would, would there be benefit, so is the liability because there's a, a limb pile period, or because it's within that area?
Within that area, allowing the general public back into the, the shop area.
So I guess I wonder, I mean, I know that we can haul limbs and such to transfer station, and I think that's a, something that we should be doing anyway. Would it, would it make sense to try to identify a different location outside of those gates to prevent just roadside dumping or lingering branches or debris?
Part of the challenge that we have is that when we have piles like that, we have to keep them separated, and we have a challenge having that done anyway. We do have bags and trash that land in that tree limb pile. We do have grass that makes that land in that pile. We do have grass that makes that land elsewhere at city shop that are not near the pile. We had a pile of scrap iron that we were trying to, to divide from projects that we had had, and ended up with trash in that pile as well. So it, it may be just be better for us to encourage people to go ahead and take their limbs to the, to the transfer station.
Sure. There's a facility for it.
Thank you.
Staff reports.
I don't know if you noticed, but the water tower's done. It's full. We're back up to nine gallons of water.
That's what it will, no, it's got five hundred dozen, which, so.
When we have high demand during summer, I don't like to have one of them empty. But anyway, I don't know if you wanted me to try to light up that one since our logo is up there, like the West Tower, I could go out and try to get bids for lighting.
Right. I'll be glad to see what it, what run. It looks nice.
Yeah, it does.
My daughters prefer the classic style, so let them know we might consider that next time.
What's that?
Just a straight block letter.
Oh.
Oh, really?
So they liked it better. Sorry, sweetheart.
I wanted to put hot on that one and cold on this.
I think it's, it's, it's somewhere down in Southeast Kansas that has hot, cold.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
What else? Today, we had, we do have our flags and stickers for the utility vehicles and the golf carts. And so I went ahead and told them to start taking registrations because I'm going to have it published in the paper on Friday, but since we named our website as a place where we could publish, I went ahead and put it on the website today. So I think we can count that as being published now. So anyway, we've got number one is gone, and they were lined up for that number, so I can start coming in now.
You get to love it.
Yeah. I mean, that's all for you. We don't need your money.
Government cash grab.
Yes. Mayor, Commissioner, comments and reports? I'll start with Commissioner Lambert.
I want to compliment Parks, and anybody else that, that was involved. I know that with summer help, being down has been pretty difficult to stay on top of mowing and trimming and whatnot, but last night was National Night Out, and the park, I know, looked, just looked real sharp, it's really well maintained, had picnic tables delivered. Just really appreciate being in a community that, that we're in, and had a really good crowd. I think we're thinking somewhere between a hundred and fifty, maybe, people were out enjoying some bounce houses, a little barbecue, so I really appreciate everyone's effort to just reset up for the event.
I don't have anything. Commissioner Baldwin? Commissioner Wentz? And I don't have any comments either, so should we adjourn to a recess, or?
No, I think, I think we're probably pretty close. She should be getting close, and I can kind of transition there. I guess I did miss one comment, too. Thank you commissioners for attending the school district's community education retreat this afternoon, too. I think we learned a little bit about what the school was, was doing. We appreciate their efforts to, to engage the community in conversations, publish with it. So thank you guys for attending. Um, do we want to recess for a few minutes until I can call and see where she's at? About twenty-five minutes ago, she was right at the state line, so we should be getting very close.
Probably pull it into the parking lot.
Okay.
Which state line?
Okay.
Do you want to buy me a time for recap of where we were at with housing at all?
Yeah, we could probably take like a five minutes. We'll just reconvene when she gets here, and just jump right in. She has a minute to settle in.
We need to make a motion.
All right, we just. Okay.
Let's talk about some official city stuff.
Okay.
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 Okay, now we will. We'll move into the housing study and market analysis by Five Rule Rural Planning.
Okay, Mary commissioners, this is Bobby Pevitt. She's owner of Five Rule Rural Planning out of Carney, Nebraska. She had a flying trip down here for us today, so we really appreciate that. We are doing a combined presentation of the formal final housing study and market assessment for the city commissioning and for the cloud court board here. So we are really excited to have her here. They have made really fast work of the study that we commissioned earlier this year. We had our first kickback meeting in January and have met with some community members. You guys have done a drive-by of every single property in the entire community to come up with this data. And it announces other data sources as well. So Bobby will kind of walk us through it and let us know what they found, what they see, and then what, any other recommendations that they have as well.
Hi. Thank you for having me. These slides are rare.
Fuller's gonna share them up on the screen.
Are you gonna be my next slide guy? Is your name Fuller over there, is that what you said?
Yep.
Thank you Fuller. Thank you guys for waiting. I was telling Amy on the way in here, I'm caught somewhere between, I cannot believe that summer is over, almost over. And yet, my kids really need to get back to school. So, thank you for waiting and you'll be glad to know they all made it home from their summer activities. So, and I've been doing this work for about ten years. I still don't think it's a plan for it. So, thank you again for waiting. So, like Amy said, I always have to start out saying my name even though you know it. I started Five Rule Planning in 2018, but I've been doing planning in some form or fashion now since the early 2000s. I grew up in Myrna, Nebraska, which is ten miles northwest of Brooklyn, Nebraska. And there's a lot of similarities, I think, between Cloud County and Custer County, which is where I'm from. And so, one reason I got into planning is that it just seems like growing up in an ag and an area that was so ag-focused. We were always advocating on behalf of our farmers and I always felt nice houses going up, but never in town. And I always thought the grain trucks going right by my house on the way to the elevator were getting nicer and nicer and our school was nice. But yeah, it always felt like my little town was falling down around me. And as a kid, that didn't make sense to me, walking to school every day by an entire, literally an entire block of houses that were vacant my entire childhood. And I was just home for a funeral in May and my Aunt Edna's house, which has been vacant since she died in 1992, is still sitting there vacant and now the porch is falling off. So, that has really bothered me and I somehow stumbled into the planning career, planning profession. And so, Concordia is actually, you guys are one of my bigger clients. Usually I work right around a thousand people, but really appreciate the opportunity to do this housing study for you. And what I've tried to do, what I've tried to give you is just enough information. So, my profession, I think, I don't know if it's because we have to hang around with attorneys and architects and engineers and all these people with all these letters, but I think sometimes we get a little bit frightened or something and we over-deliver information. And so, I hope that what I'm giving you this evening. If you guys are the, wow. Weird, I'm just gonna do this. There. And the board, the Cloud County Councilman Board, I hope to give you guys enough information. And also, what's the purpose of a study? I'm also the granddaughter of a sandhilled rancher and the word consultant just makes me uncomfortable. I don't know why. I think because where I come from, if you spend money on something, it's land and cows. It's not on a study, right? Just go do it. So, I keep asking myself, what's been the purpose of you guys doing this study here? And I think it's because you know from economic development and you know from leading government that housing has gotten to a point that is holding you back. You can't get any further on your own. And in a lot of communities I work in, and especially in the early 2000s, I was, one of the first type of economic development jobs I had was working with Tom Osborne. Not coaching football, but he was our third district congressman. And we went from town to town in greater Nebraska, setting up economic development boards and these grassroots community-led development groups. But what I started to see is that economic development, you can have money and leadership, but you can only get so far. And then the government has to come along beside you or you get stuck. Also, what I think that we did in the early 2000s, still trying to recover from the recession of the eighties. I think that we went about the business of recruiting jobs. And I think we thought that if we bring jobs, everything else will take care of itself. And I think we're finding now that we brought the jobs, but we didn't bring the houses and it's not taking care of itself. And so, now in the eighties, I had a lot of big things going on in the eighties, like learning to walk and potty training and starting school. But from what I can tell about doing these studies is we built houses in the forties, we built houses in the fifties, we built houses in the sixties, we built houses in the seventies. And then we hit the ag recession of the eighties and it was very hard on the whole area. Our family lost a dirt rookie business in the eighties and then we just stopped building houses. We recovered in a lot of ways. We brought more jobs to our economy and we made our economies more diverse and stronger because we recruited a lot of jobs that were either ag-supported jobs or not tied to agriculture at all. But we stopped building houses and we definitely stopped building houses inside of our cities. So I think if you look around Cloud County, you'll see some of your nicest homes, your nicest homes probably are not inside of the city. And for me, I spent my entire childhood in Vernon, Nebraska, never ever saw a neighborhood being developed. And so now we literally have generations of leadership that we don't even really know where to start to develop land or to build a neighborhood that's not like one acre, everybody is on one acre cul-de-sacs, right? So, all the way back to what I'm trying to help you with, why are you doing a study? You know intuitively that housing is holding you back from getting any further that you want to go, either as a business or a community, until you can try to solve the problem. The housing is very complex and it's very personal. And so it's very messy for you as an economic development board or you as a local government, oh sorry, to get involved. Like, bidget. So the information that I prepared for you or presented to you, I hope will give you enough information that you just feel ready to take the next step. Not to fix the housing situation altogether, but to at least take the next step. So Fuller, next slide please. Okay, well that's just the front of the study, but that's fine. Okay, so I tried to divide the information that I'm gathering up into two big pieces based on your biggest assets as a community. So as a city, your biggest assets are your people and your land. Your people are variable, your land is fixed. We also call it quantitative or qualitative for the head and the heart. So, what we tried to do for you was to collect information and gather information that would help you make a decision under two main umbrellas, either your people, we tried to communicate with the community as much as possible. And then also your land, we did an existing land use inventory and a little bit of a market analysis to help you figure out where was the best place to add housing. So this slide up here, this is, we started out with a community engagement kickoff. So I always ask the folks that hire us, which almost always the local government needs to be involved, because no offense, but usually it's the local governments that I have to try to bring along, not the economic development group. So, so in this case, it was Amy and then at the time, I think it was Kim on your economic development board. We worked together and I had them brainstorm a list of stakeholders and advocates. So, I still believe in face-to-face communications. I don't believe in social media to get people's opinions. And I a little bit believe in surveys, but I still think if you want to know what a person is thinking, it's still best to have a conversation with them. It's not realistic for me to have three thousand conversations, right? So we try to be efficient about it. So that's why we ask for stakeholders and advocates. So a stakeholder is somebody that has a vested interest in seeing the city of Concordia, seeing the housing situation improve. That might be a realtor, that might be a contractor, that might be a major employer. But you need to see the housing situation fixed. You have a vested interest in it. An advocate is somebody that can speak on behalf of those folks that are not going to come to a meeting or am I not going to take a survey? I'm not just talking about marginalized low-income households, although if you are a household earning less than twenty-five thousand in today's day and age, chances are you are in survival mode and you're not going to come to a meeting about housing, right? You're just trying to figure out how to get through the day. Or if you're like me, encroaching on forty and you are trying to build a business and raise kids and you have a lot going on, you're also not going to come to a meeting, right? So, we try to find advocates or the people that are involved enough in Concordia that they can advocate on behalf of those folks that aren't going to participate in this study, either because they're unwilling or unable. So we used to take that list and cold-call people, but you can imagine how friendly people were when I would call and invite them to a meeting. I'm sure in Concordia, you guys all would have been great, but in other towns, people aren't real friendly when I call and invite them to a meeting. So we started out with something called a community engagement kickoff and this was back in February. And I think you were out scooping the sidewalks for us, so thank you very much Pastor. And we got as many of those stakeholders and advocates into the room as we could. I tried to bribe them with a free meal. It was a hamburger bar. It was really good. And I basically told them what we were trying to do and why we were asking for their attention. And then this questionnaire on the right, we asked people to fill out this worksheet or fill out this questionnaire and then we use that information for the next event. So the folks that came to the community engagement kickoff, we were there to try to woo them or win them over and get them to agree to share their time. Because I really think that today, money is valuable, but I think your time is almost more valuable than your life. So we were trying to get people to share their time. So, we invited those folks to this workshop discovery. And then I think some of those folks that came to the kickoff went back and told their peers that we weren't so bad and we would be okay. So we had more people come to the workshop and we actually had to come to the kickoff. So what you see on there, those are just, those are pictures of the workshop that we had. We call it a focused conversation. We had a rough, I know. I know there was a blizzard and I know it was good actually, because we got here the night before and we had a lot of contractors that came because it couldn't work because there was so much snow. So that was my, okay, next slide, Fuller. So, the next thing that I'm showing you is just the results from that workshop. So we asked, everything on the right is the information that we gathered. We asked, first, we handed the folks that came to the workshop, we handed them the information that we had gleaned from those workshops that people filled out at the kickoff. And then we asked them a series of questions. And then from those questions, we were able to identify particular themes. So if you took our housing study survey, I hope and I think that you will have felt like, wow, this is not a very long survey. And these are really easy questions to answer. So, if that's the way you felt, you're welcome. That was my idea. Anyway, we took those, we took those results from the workshop and we developed your community survey based on that. So you were not taking Norton's housing study survey, you were not taking Arapahoe's housing study survey. If that survey question within your survey is because we've heard about it a lot in the workshops. And a lot of the questions I asked in this survey were a lot more pointed and personal because when we did those workshops, almost everybody in that workshop knew of a specific incidence where they had lost an employee or they themselves couldn't come to Concordia right away, or they had a family that wasn't able to locate in Concordia because there was nowhere to live. So, we were trying to ask people specifically if this had affected you. Next slide. So we had, I think we had roughly two hundred and fifteen people that responded to our survey. This is just an example of the questionnaire that we had. Again, most of the questions were very pointed and personal and then there was only a couple of questions in there asking residents in Concordia what they thought, what type of projects they thought would be the most impactful. Again, because housing is very personal and complex and so unless you're a realtor or developer, you don't necessarily, you're not really in tune to what type of housing the whole community needs. You just know about your personal experiences. Next slide. So, oh gosh, I gotta walk up here so I can see this better. So we said, again, we said we had roughly two hundred and fifteen people that took the survey. So down here, I asked those people, had you searched for a place to live in Concordia in the past three years? And we had just over a hundred or just over half say that they had searched for a place to live in Concordia in the last three years or they knew of somebody that had searched for a place to live. And of that, sixty-seven of those folks said that they were still searching. And then another forty said that the search lasted, the search lasted more than three months. So, I think here, you know, that's the part of the problem with doing studies and being a consultant is sometimes you guys are paying me to tell you what you already know. But because I've come to Concordia and I'm not from here and I've surveyed you, I can confirm for you that this is actually happening to a lot of people. This is not just your situation or unique reasons why somebody can't find a house. So I'm confirming for you that, yeah, people are not able to find a place to live in Concordia. And now, remember, the people that probably have time to take these surveys, these are probably like your registered voters. These are the people that are paying attention to the community. They probably have higher incomes. And so, again, this is not affecting your low-income households. These are professionals probably that are trying to relocate to Concordia. So then, we asked people to self-identify if they were either a business owner or a manager or if they were in some sort of a supervisory position in their company that they would have some idea of if the business or the company or the organization was struggling because they couldn't find employees. And so here, the majority of survey respondents said that the ability to hire and the ability to retain employees has limited the ability of their companies to grow. So again, I think that what we did, and I think we did it well because we're Midwesterners and we solve problems, that's what we do. We went out and we got us some jobs, right? And now we have the jobs and we don't have the people to fill the jobs. So we've created these businesses, we've become an entrepreneurial ecosystem, we've tried to prop folks up and now they're ready to hire and they turn around and there's nobody to hire. So we are, we're confirming that for them too. And then we say, we asked them, if you were an employer, supervisor, or manager and you weren't able to hire or retain employees, what were the reasons? What were the reasons those employees said they couldn't find housing? And the number one reason, the number one negative thing was the condition of your rental housing. So, we're gonna talk about that in a little bit with your existing land use inventory. But that has come up over and over that there's a lot of substandard housing in Concordia. And then the second reason was your availability of homes for sale. So rental housing and homes for sale. And then so down here, I asked them, what's your role, what's your opinion on housing or how are you related to housing in Concordia? And seventy-five percent or the majority of respondents, they were just residents interested in the community. So, then I go and ask them, do you think the city in Cloud County should provide financial incentives that would improve the availability of adequate housing? And so most of these folks are just, they're not just, they're residents interested in the community, okay? They're not realtors or mortgage lenders, maybe some of them are. But most of them are taking this from somebody who cares about their community. And so then we're asking them, do you want to see city of Concordia in Cloud County economic development? That equals public or quasi-public money? Do you want to see public money spent on housing development? And the reason I always ask this question is because again, housing development gets sticky, right? And I was just in Tilden, Nebraska last night and listening to the same argument, why would we give money to so-and-so to make their business stronger if we can't give money to everybody, right? Well, because so-and-so's business is a dentist and that's important to the entire community. And we need to fix the housing situation, even though housing is a private good. It looks to me like your community is in favor of you spending public money on this private problem. And not just public money in the form of public housing or section eight vouchers or low-income housing, but it looks to me like your community is in favor of you spending public dollars on this private good and not just for low income either. For people that it would seem like they should be able to buy a nice enough house, why would we buy a house for them? Well, maybe they can buy a nice house, but maybe they can't buy a nice house that also comes on a fifty thousand dollar lot because that lot's never been filled up. Or maybe they can buy a nice house, but they can't build a house, right? We don't have enough inventory for these folks. Again, these people are most likely, people that take these surveys are most likely registered voters. So I think that they're telling you, Mr. and Mrs. elected officials, that you have permission or your community wants to see you get involved and they want to see you spend money on this problem. Not throw money at the problem, but spend, see what the best uses of your public dollars. And I spend a lot of money on this question because I think that we still, here in the Midwest, I think we still get hung up on this question. I'm not saying that we buy everybody's housing or we start a giant housing welfare program, right? But housing is a private good and the private market right now is failing you. So the last time I checked, we're still a capitalistic society, mostly capitalistic, which means that private, we function in the private market and most individuals make decisions on what benefits them the most. Okay, but because we have certain goods that the private market has failed to provide, you guys are probably painfully aware, swimming pools, sanitary systems, police protection, right? There are certain goods that we as a public spend money on because the private market has failed to provide that good or cannot provide that good and generate a profit. And right now, somebody has to go first and demonstrate to the private developer or bring the private housing market back to life. I'm not talking about you guys spending money on one acre or larger single-family lots on the edges of town, right? I'm not talking about spending money on developing that. I'm talking about putting your resources towards rebuilding some neighborhoods or building new neighborhoods inside of the city of Concordia that your workforce can live in or that your retiring workforce can move over into and still be part of your community. So I spent a lot of time on that question because I think that if you are gonna take this housing study and do something with it, you're gonna want to be prepared to make those decisions and I want this to stick in your mind. I don't always think it's fair for elected officials, like you show up to a meeting at five-thirty, you just got off work and now you need to know if you want to spend a million dollars on this sewer vein or not. I don't know if that's always fair to you. So, I want certain things to stick in your mind. Okay, Fuller, next slide. Okay, so that was just a snippet of the survey results. So throughout this study, I tell you that we have things like your full survey results available in the appendix. And from my perspective as a consultant, it gives me like a huge sense of satisfaction when I hand Amy a book that's like this, then. But we all know that Amy's not gonna sit down and read that book, but I'm telling you, I have all your survey results. And when you get, I mean, I know Amy will because she's high-speed and she's very talented and all of that stuff, but most city managers don't have time to read it and memorize it. So, but you do have all of your full survey results and I presented those at an earlier meeting. Now I'm moving on to what I said was your land, right? It's more of a fixed asset. You gain people, you lose people, it's fluid, it comes and goes, but your land is what it is. And you, in the Midwest, again, with some of the best farming soil in the world, we're well aware that our land is a fixed asset. So we did this existing land use inventory. We drove up and down every street in Concordia and I have found, in fact, because I come from a town like this, I like to get in and I like to get out and I like to get this done before I know who the names are in this town. Because we've all got them, right? And so, and that's why I don't work in the town that I'm from. So I just, I wanted to get in at, get in and get out and be able to tell you from the nearest public right away, this is what your community looked like to us. So we argue, I get this all the time, this major where and this dilapidated. So we said less than one percent of your house. So we said less than one percent of your housing stock, we would consider to be dilapidated. Um, however, we counted twenty-two hundred total units. So, even one percent of twenty-two hundred is, um, that's over twenty dilapidated units, I think. I'm a little nervous. I can't do math when I'm in front of people. But I remember thinking that if you think, oh, just point six-one percent of twenty-two hundred, that's not that big of a deal. But if you think about how many units that is, wow, what, what a difference it would make if you could instantly have ten units back right away that are already gone. Um, on your units that have major where, this is what major where looks like on this second page. And I have that in your, I also put that in the appendix so you can see. So, dilapidated is pretty darn vast, like literally falling in on itself, like, like Bruno wouldn't even go in there without a hard hat. So, that is dilapidated. Um, but the major where, that's just really tired housing where people could or couldn't be living there. Okay, and so we did say that almost fifteen percent of your stock is, is, is that major where. Um, now, I spent a lot of time on this and I still bet it's probably not exactly right. But I've worked pretty hard to get as accurate as we can on your vacancy rate and on your occupancy rate. And so we went back and forth with your clerk and then we also compared to what, um, compared to the houses that we drove by. But I'm pretty sure you have at least a hundred and nineteen vacant houses. Like vacant, nobody's lived there, nobody's living there, nobody has lived there in over six months. And there's no, there's no active utilities being paid on that house. That's not just us driving by and looking. That's working with your clerk on your idle utility accounts. Then we have another thirty-five houses, that's that N E D U, no evidence of daily use. So, they're not on your list of having idle utilities. But when we drive by that house, we don't think it's being used as a house. We think it's probably being used as storage for Aunt Edna died and she left her one tiny lot to all four kids and their four kids and nobody knows what to do with it. And it's just sitting there and somebody mows it and the door is locked, but it's not, it's not a house anymore. Or the farm is using it for storage. So, we think you have another thirty-five of those units. Um, at the time we came through, I don't wanna get backwards. Yeah, we counted thirty-nine that were for sale at the time. So, uh, planning, practice, best standards, we think best standards vacancy rate is seven percent. So seven percent of your housing stock is vacant. But, but when we say that seven percent, we are assuming that those seven percent of homes are for sale. But in your case, um, only two percent of the housing stock was actually for sale. And five percent is sitting there vacant. So you are at almost seven percent vacancy, but only two percent is actually for sale. And you have another five percent of your housing stock that's just sitting there, literally just sitting there. Um, there's another thing I wanted to talk about and we'll get to that map here in a little bit. But up here on the north end of town where you are in the hundred-year floodplain, your worst housing is, it's really clustered on that north end of town. And where it's in the floodplain, it's probably not worth it to redevelop those homes. And so you need to consider a program for phasing that out as housing. I don't know if every time one of those houses empties out, we're gonna talk about strategies here in a minute. But maybe every time one of those houses in the floodplain empties out, you have a plan to get ahold of that house and, and get it on the ground. But this is probably good future park space, but not good housing space. So if you're thinking about this from a big picture perspective, if this becomes a park over time and this part of Concordia could use some nice amenities, if this becomes a park over time, well, what other park space do we have that might be better as a neighborhood later on? So, think about maybe swapping some of the land that you have. Um, so we have, we mapped out these results and there's eleven by seventeen maps at the, in the back of your book and I'm happy to get you even bigger maps. Um, when we, this map right here is a combination of taking your people's ideas and opinions and then your land, your fixed assets. So these bigger, these prettier colored blobs in the, um, document, these are where we asked, when we did those focus conversations back in March, one of the questions that we asked those participants was what opportunities are available to us? What options do we have when it comes to land development or where we wanna put these houses at? And so, the, the brighter colors in your map, those represent what people identify as opportunities or where we could possibly put houses. Um, two opportunities that caught my attention, uh, that I wanted to be sure and talk about and mention a couple of times is that what's soon to be your former hospital site is located right in the middle of a neighborhood. And then also, I think this nursing home is vacant. I don't think anything's happening with this old nursing home, the one right next to the hospital.
What one we're at?
On Seventh Street?
Oh.
Seventh or Eleventh? East Seventh or West Eleventh?
This one up here on the northeast part.
Oh.
On East.
It's on Seventh Street.
Okay, on Seventh Street?
Somewhere like five.
That's a single-family dwelling.
That's a single-family dwelling.
Correct.
All right.
I thought it was Airbnb.
All right, well, that's, that's what I would call underutilized space right there. And I can say that because I don't live here, so I'll be leaving soon. So I'm gonna say that this property is, this nursing home property is underutilized and I would see it as an opportunity. Um, first, and then this blue area here in town, okay, I already said this floodplain area on the north end of town is not, is not a good spot to keep putting houses because it's in the floodplain, so it's never gonna be a good investment. You can't, no one's gonna get a mortgage on that. The amount of dirt works we need to do to get it out of floodplain, it's not worth it, right? But then you do have this, this core of Concordia when you go a little bit further south and that's got the blue underlaid under it. Now, I think that those, that's a better place to look for redeveloping houses. So when we lay our results on top of that, where we said there's, where our house is dilapidated and also vacant, some people get sad about that. I get very excited about that. I would call that a high-value target. And if that high-value target is in this blue zone, then I, then I would highly encourage you to develop a list of properties and when one of those properties comes up for sale, make sure that you get it bought. Because I do think in this, in this core part of Concordia here, uh, I'm just gonna say in the middle of town, those homes are worth paying attention to. Those homes are worth recovering. Unlike that neighborhood on the north end of town, that's also floodplain. Okay, well, our next slide. Oh, I did put the maps in here, okay. Um, so this right here, this first map, this is your housing stock in this slide, okay? Now, if you notice a property on here and you are the owner and I called it dilapidated and it's not really dilapidated or major where and it's not really major where. Or if your son lives there and he knows that the window's boarded up and he's gonna get to it one of these days, you don't have to raise your hand right now and tell me that. You can, you can discreetly send me an email later if you want. Um, we do try to get very accurate with this though. So this map is showing you, um, these are only residential units. So if it's not colored, we didn't think it was a residential unit. That's, that's commercial or industrial or park space. So the bulk of your community is still basically housing, right? Um, there's just a couple of trailer houses sprinkled throughout and there's a little bit of multifamily sprinkled throughout. Multifamily, multifamily's apartment homes, townhomes. That, especially in a college town, that can be kind of like occupancy, determining your actual occupancy. Um, we probably don't know about all these little apartments in Concordia. So it's, it's pretty accurate for me to say exactly how many multifamily units we have. But again, going off of the city's utility records, I think only ten percent of your housing stock is multifamily. And that's actually pretty low. Most communities are twenty-five to thirty percent multifamily. It might be higher than ten percent. But what the city knows about as far as who's on separate meters, so the landlords that are kind of doing it right, only ten percent of your housing stock right now is multifamily and it's, it's sort of sprinkled throughout town. Um, okay, well, our next slide. Okay, so this, then I took your long-term idle utility accounts. Uh, so those are the yellow ones. And then I think I put the condition, yeah, if it's, if it's red, it's dilapidated and if it's black, it has major where. So again, like inside of this blue, here's a couple, there's a couple of, I would say like high-value targets are a good place to start. Where you can see lots that are clustered together, that are vacant, long-term vacant, or that are dilapidated. And now one of you is probably thinking it, maybe a little bit, one of you is gonna say, well, nobody wants to buy this lot. There's only fifty foot wide, so it's a total waste. Even if we buy it and demolish it, we're just gonna have a lot of fifty-foot frontage. Nobody likes that. But you'll be surprised when you can cluster some of these together. So, um, Arapaho is not that far from here and the community I've been working in for several years, we have a handful of programs going and we are, we're getting to the spot where we are almost gonna have an entire block cleared. At one point, it was a block full of, I'm gonna say like seven different, really bad properties. And slowly, over time, I mean, it feels slowly, but really it's been seven years, we have almost an entire block completely cleared that we're gonna be able to redevelop into some pretty decent-sized units. So, um, you have to think about it from a big picture, big picture perspective. And no, you can't probably buy up all of these houses, houses and demolish them at once because it's expensive. But again, you can use our data and create some high-value, high-value targets. Especially just start with your yellow, start with your yellow squares inside of my, like the blue target areas. And you can see where there, where some of them are really clustered together. Okay, next slide. Um, I don't know what's at the top of this. Vacant lots, that's what this one is. We also counted a lot of vacant lots. Uh, when I read Amy's RFP, her request for proposals, I was really excited to get in here and find out about your CDVG demolition program. That's Community Development Block Grant, CDVG. Um, in Nebraska, we don't get to use CDVG. CDVG is federal money that comes from the powers that be at housing and urban development. In Kansas, that money comes through the Department of Commerce. Um, in Nebraska, that money comes through Department of Economics Development and we don't get to use that money for demolition. So lucky for you guys, you get to use that money for demolition. Um, but what I was surprised to find out is that after you demolish a house, you can't put anything back for five years. So you guys are starting to get an inventory already of vacant lots. And, uh, we counted well over a hundred vacant lots. So not all of these lots I know are gonna be redeveloped into housing, but I did lay your vacant lots on top of these target areas. Now, I labeled these target areas, um, as best I could to represent what, what the people that came to that focus group, um, those focus group conversations were saying. So I know I already talked about the hospital and the, and the nursing home. And I'm just calling that just healthcare facilities that could be redeveloped to single-family or multifamily. Um, the orange, this is where the neighbor, it could be neighborhood expansion. Um, the green, this is new construction, new subdivisions, and this is a while out. And if, I already know somebody in here is maybe gonna say it, they're thinking it, well, that family is never gonna sell that way. So, maybe, but maybe they will. Might be surprised. I've seen, a couple times now, I've seen grandpa pass away and now the kids aren't as worried about selling off quarter section. Not all the farm ground, but they don't mind selling off a little bit here and there. So, you have to be ready though, because once they decide to do that, you know, these landowners, especially that are farmers, they're not developers. So they're not gonna, they're not gonna know how to get flatted and annexed and laid out. You, you will wanna be ready for that to happen, so it's not so hard. Um, okay, next slide. Okay, so now we're going to get into the numbers. These next three pages are, um, these are charts that I have tried to develop over the years to help you wrap your mind around where you wanna start with housing. Now, these are all formulas that I just created in Excel and I would gladly give the Excel workbook to Amy. And Amy's kind of a, she's a bright-brain nerd like I am and she probably loves to sit and work with her Excel workbooks like I do. So, um, she can, you can tweak these formulas to, to make them work better for you or to help you set goals. This is just my, this is just my first take at it. This first table here, this is me trying to help you wrap your mind around what's happening right now for the households that live in Concordia right now. Um, it's on page sixteen of the study. And I am trying, with this chart, I am trying to combine, um, the number of the income ranges of the households you have in Concordia, the value of the homes you have in Concordia, and then also the actual units that you have. So I am combining our real-time data of units that we counted with the Census Bureau's estimate of what your houses are worth and what your households are made. So, I know you guys are at the end of the day and I'm not gonna run you through this whole chart. But the bottom line is, you are very, very short of homes valued between a hundred thousand and two hundred thousand. And again, you're like, thank you, Bobby. I'm glad you drove down here and be patient to tell us what we already know. But you have way too many homes that are valued at fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. I'm saying valued at. I'm saying appraised value by your county appraiser, that information that gets fed up to the census. I am not talking about the crazy prices that people are paying for housing right now. These are not sell prices. These are appraisals. These are value prices. So because you have way too many homes that are only really worth fifty to a hundred thousand dollars and not near enough homes that are worth over a hundred thousand dollars, your homes that are probably worth eighty thousand dollars, I bet are being bought for like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars right now. Because there's a shortage of that greater housing stock. So like in nineteen, nineteen eighty-two ranch-style, three-bedroom, two-bedroom, that needs a whole bunch of updating, but is in a decent neighborhood on a decent lot, it comes up for sale, it's probably only worth ninety thousand dollars. But you have enough people earning enough money, um, they're gonna bid on that house. And by the time that's over with, that ninety thousand eighty-two, ninety thousand nineteen eighty-two ranch-style suddenly got sold for a hundred and fifty thousand. And that's gonna, that's, that's, that's making your supply and demand curve very wonky. For those of us that took Econ one hundred, supply curve, demand curve, it's all, it's all over the place. And so, what do we have to do? We have to increase our supply. Well, how are we gonna do that? We're gonna talk about that. Um, okay, so there's a page in there, I should've put it in the slide though. Um, there's a page in there that's your population projection. It's a line, it's a line graph. Everybody remembers what line graphs are.
Page ten.
Page ten. That is your, that's your population projection. So I took your population numbers, um, for the last hundred years. So they started recording population in Concordia in nineteen ten. So I took your population numbers from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty and I, um, estimated a couple of scenarios. Now, if you guys follow, if Concordia follows the same population pattern that it followed a hundred years ago, you are poised to grow in the next decade. If you just keep doing what you've been doing, you're gonna have a decade of growth. Nineteen twenty in Concordia was a decade of growth. So if you just go off your historical population patterns, twenty twenty will be a decade of growth for you, okay? Um, I don't know if that's totally realistic, because if that happens, if you follow the same patterns, you're gonna grow in this next decade and then you're gonna drop right back off. So, that's what you did a hundred years ago and that's what this is saying is gonna happen to you again. So I didn't really like that scenario. So I came up with a couple other scenarios. If you are able to grow, and I know you're going to, right? Because first of all, you hired a planner in your small town in rural Kansas, so you're already progressive. In fact, I'm standing here and you're paying me to stand here. That already makes you progressive, so congratulations. So I am optimistic that you're gonna grow. Maybe not a lot, but I think you're gonna, you'll be able to stabilize because I know that what's gonna come out of this is some good programs and you're gonna stabilize your population and maybe have minimal or steady growth. And so I gave you two more scenarios. If you just have one-half percent annual population increase per year for the next seven years. And then I gave you another scenario. If you have a one percent increase in your population per year for the next seven years. So we're, we're about to get into some map and I know that's six forty. So if I made a mistake in my map, you can also just email me discreetly. I think that you are gonna get the, what I'm trying to say though. So, this, this page right here, page thirteen, is connected to that population projection. So if you just go off of scenario one, you go off of scenario one and you grow from twenty twenty to twenty thirty, like you did from nineteen twenty to nineteen thirty, um, your population is gonna increase by about eight hundred people. And then based off of the people that took your survey, because we asked them for their household size and what the American Community Survey asked and what the American Community Survey estimates your average household size to be, I am estimating your average household size here is two point five nine persons per household. So if your population is gonna grow by eight hundred and twenty people, if you divide that number by two point five nine, that means you're going to need another three hundred housing units by twenty thirty. Doesn't that just make you like a little bit, like how are you even gonna do that? We haven't even built three units per year in the last thirty years. Now we need to build three hundred in the next seven years. That's ridiculous, right? But that, if you do, but just think in nineteen twenty, how many housing units were there when you were growing? I mean, somehow they figured it out in the nineteen twenties, right? And we can figure out the twenty twenties, can't we? Hope. I, in some ways, we are getting dumber as a society, I will say. Um, and then I try to estimate this for you based on your current housing rate. So, uh, if you need, I gotta pause for a minute. So I'm saying you need three hundred and seventeen units just because based on historical patterns, you're gonna grow by eight hundred people. Something else you need to consider though is, okay, twenty twenties, that's when you've probably added a lot of houses. I'm sorry, nineteen twenties, you had a big growth in population, that's when you built a lot of houses. Well, while your housing stock was built in nineteen twenties, it's about to be over a hundred years old. So you don't, you don't also just need to think about planning for new population. You also need to keep in the back of your mind, we're gonna have, we've gotta replace some of our age tower stock. We already have over a hundred units that nobody's even living in right now. So that, so we just replaced one percent of your housing stock. Um, then you're, then that's twenty units a year. So over the next seven years, that's a hundred and forty units. So now it's even more like, God, that's a lot. So if we add a hundred and forty, what you need to replace, hundred, one percent of your housing stock, plus the three hundred and seventeen units you need if you've grown in the twenties, in the twenty twenties like you did in the nineteen twenties, then you need another four hundred and fifty-seven units. Now you are ninety percent single family occupied housing and ten percent multifamily occupied housing. So if you keep that same breakdown, then you need four hundred and eleven single family units, um, by twenty thirty and forty-six multifamily units. Not forty-six apartment buildings, but maybe one apartment building with forty-six units, right? You, that's a multifamily unit. So I run you through, and I'm sorry, that comes down to, um, sixty-six units a year. Fifty-nine single family units plus seven multifamily units a year. I don't, I don't know if we can get there, but it's a place to start, right? At least we're thinking about it right now intentionally. That is if you do in the twenty twenties what you did in the nineteen twenties. The other two scenarios are not quite so overwhelming. Um, the, the scenario I like the best is scenario number two. And that is if your population grows by one half percent every year. You would still be trying to come up with thirty-six units a year though, to keep up with that. And if that's too much to, and that's why I'm gonna give these formulas to Amy and you can, and you over the back, your name is not Kim. Nikki, yes, Amy and Nikki. And as you pursue housing funds and projects, you might wanna, you might wanna say, you know what? I know we need to do something about those units at a hundred years old, but I can't wrap my mind around that right now. So we're not gonna try to replace a hundred and forty units in the next seven years. We're just gonna try to add a hundred years, a hundred units in the next seven years. That's fine. But this, these formulas should help you set some goals. These are the goals I set for you on my own. Now you can take this and set your own goals based on these formulas. Um, this other one is another way of looking at your estimated of housing affordability to accommodate projected growth. And I'm on page fourteen now, so I took those scenarios again. So over here, I told you how many units you need to add in the next seven years if you're gonna go for this twenty thirty population. This one, page fourteen, this is how many, this is what, um, what percentage of units need to accommodate a different household bracket. So if we do scenario two again, which is, which is the one I like the best, uh, we're saying you need thirty-six, uh, new units in the next seven years. And let's assume that these new residents that are gonna move here in the next seven years, they're somehow gonna, they're somehow gonna resemble, resemble the income breakdown that you already have. Because you have job openings at all levels of incomes here. So if you need thirty-six units, um, based on scenario two, and that means eleven of those units need to serve households, or they need to be affordable to households that are earning twenty-five thousand or less. Those are most likely single head of household income earners, right? So those are probably gonna be multifamily units. Those are probably not gonna be owner occupied units. So you probably need eleven more rental or multifamily units for your populations, for your households earning twenty-five thousand or less per year. Um, five units for your households earning twenty-five to fifty thousand. Nine units, nine to ten units for your households earning fifty thousand. Five units for your households earning seventy-five to a hundred thousand. Four units for your households earning a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand and then one unit, well, one to two units for your households earning a hundred and fifty thousand or more. So that's per year. Um, thirty-six units, yes, thirty-six units per year. If that, so whatever you decide is the scenario you really think you're gonna achieve, what do you really think? I told you from all my planner jargon, what I think your population is gonna be in twenty thirty, but I don't live here, right? I'm giving you the tools that you can mess with these numbers and decide, what do you think your population is gonna be in twenty thirty? And then you can take this table and mess with these numbers and decide what income brackets you're going for. And then you can look at the array of housing programs out there and decide which ones can accommodate what you're trying to do. Okay, next slide Fuller. Are you still with me back there? I do realize not everybody thinks this is exciting, is I do. Okay, so now we have the study observations and recommendations. Um, I grouped my observations into three main categories. Um, number one is you have a need for new housing now. You have, um, some substandard housing where you really need to come up with better options. Um, and then if you do in the twenty twenties what you did in the nineteen twenties, you are poised to grow again. And I think that's why I'm here, is because most of you intuitively know that the city is trying to grow, trying to figure out how to grow. You can feel the growth coming. Um, and then you have your housing market imbalance. So your shortage of supply um, at your homes valued right around a hundred thousand is just like dragging up that cost of those older homes that are fifty to a hundred thousand. So we have to figure out how to increase the supply. And again, thank you, Bobby, for telling us what we already know. But this is supposed to give you some facts of, of why houses are going for way more than they're supposed to be going and why it would make sense to simply just increase your housing supply in some areas of town. Um, and then this last one for you guys is there is an opportunity to capitalize. There's a lot of opportunities inside of Concordia. So I hear in every town I work in, can't grow or landlocked. You know, we got the Saffranics over here and we got the Reynolds over here and we got the dairy up here and the hog farm down here and they never gonna sell. We're never gonna grow, not the end of it. So I'm just, everybody's just gonna have to go buy three acre big lots on the edge of town and build small castles out there. That's, that's how it's gonna be, but it doesn't have to be that way. You have a lot of opportunities inside of Concordia. There's, there's over a hundred vacant lots. There's over a hundred houses that nobody's living in right now. And then I feel like you have some larger chunks of land, your hospital, your, what's about to be your old hospital for one, that you could turn back around, that you could get control of, um, and do something with. So, so this last one is you have some opportunities right now, but just with, with a little bit of leadership and initiative and some money, um, I think you could, you could turn, you could start to turn this around right now with the land that you have inside of Concordia. And then you will have to grow as a city. Every city has to find a way to grow and that's why we're here. This is what planners are for. So, um, I think your comprehensive plan is maybe ten years old, but there's a magic document in your comprehensive plan called your future land use map. And that is supposed to help you highlight the areas that you wanna grow. Now I'm gonna say that word to make everybody uncomfortable, but we're gonna have to annex some land, okay? You're going to have to take that purple line that goes around Concordia and it's gonna have to get fixed, alright? And we cannot, I don't know how much is going on here, but I know how much it goes on everywhere else I work. We cannot be providing utilities to folks and not annexing them. We cannot be annexing lots without plating them and having a plan to serve them with streets, water and sanitary. You're going to have to annex some land. Somebody's gonna have to do it. It can't be me. I'm not elected official. Okay, um, so that brings us to the strategic plan. So I don't like that word strategic plan, just like I don't like the word consultant, but I can't think of a better, a better phrase right now. But I break it up into what I call the three Ps. So what's a strategic plan is the three Ps, your programs, projects and policies. And so I gave you a strategic plan for the next three years. It's this bigger document that you have to unfold. And again, I'll give it to Amy in electronics format and you can decide the ones that you actually want to do. But I want you to take this strategic plan and you have three years, A and B, your one, your two, your three. And so on the left side of the strategic plan, oh Fuller, next slide please. On the left side of the strategic plan are those, are those three themes that I just identified for you. So theme number one, you need housing right now. Um, theme number two is you have a housing market imbalance, your demand is way exceeding your supply in some income brackets. And then theme number three is you can capitalize on some current opportunities right now. And then you need to start undertaking some long-term planning initiatives too. So I'm talking five to ten years out. And so, um, and then across the board, you have your programs, your projects and your policies. So some of the things that you need to do, I call them programs. They're not necessarily all on the commission to do and they're not something that happens quickly. They're, they're something that you are constantly working at or trying to establish. Um, so I think what I would do here first, you know, because I think it's important once I'm done working for you to keep, to keep working on something, right? And it might take you a while to acquire some land or it might take you a while to get a grant, put a project together. But I would strongly recommend that you take that list of stakeholders and advocates that I worked with, um, when I was, when I was here doing this study. And we established a, a local housing development group or a local housing development think tank. So we have the city commission here, which is all public, which is good. We have Cloud County Economic Development, which is quasi-public, which is good. Now we need another group, which is, which has the ability to move very swiftly if they need to. So if, if a house comes up for sale, it's too messy for the council to buy it or Cladcorp doesn't wanna own anymore, we, we almost need a third housing think tank group that has a little bit of money that can go, that can go buy up properties that doesn't have so much rent tape. So you could start, you could just start with that, with trying to put that group together. And I know who you could start with because I had stakeholders and advocates that kept coming back to the table that are clearly interested in this. Um, let me give you another example. We're not gonna go through this whole matrix or I, I'm already starting to lose some of you. I'll completely lose you all. So, well, here's one that I know will be exciting. Um, we really, oh shoot, I haven't had it. We really need to decide and look into a rental registration program. So, uh, yeah, we've got some pretty substandard rentals and I know that always makes folks really uncomfortable too. But, um, whenever, when I was doing the housing study, whenever I float the idea of incentivizing landlords to make rentals nicer, I didn't, I didn't get a very warm response. So the general perception is that, um, we need a little bit more of a watchdog on our lower grade rentals. And that's a lot to take on. That is politically a lot to ask your council to take on. Being in Kearney, Nebraska, almost forty thousand people, that's a lot for Kearney to take on. So I don't know if it's possible, but again, it's something, it's a policy that you could at least investigate. And you have our data from the housing study to tell you why you're thinking to investigate that. Think you have some households here earning twenty-five thousand or less that are probably living in some really bad housing that don't really have anybody to look out for them. So that would be just at this point, I'm not saying you have to do it next week. I'm not saying that you need it, but you could, you could decide that we're gonna give somebody the assignment of investigating other rental inspection programs and how they're going, if there are anything that we could duplicate it. And you have my housing study to help you with that. Um, another project that I kind of like is your hospital property. Okay, so if we think about how many units, uh, you can turn your, the density rate that I'm thinking for you. So I also do zoning regulations and you guys think it's hard for you to follow right now. Try being a volunteer group, trying to write zoning regulations at seven o'clock at night. How do you think those people are? Okay, so, but the density that I would be shooting for you guys is roughly six units per acre. And, um, the hospital is six acres, right? That sound about right? Yeah, so your hospital property is six acres. And so if you shoot for six units per acre, I have this listed in here as a project. Um, in the next, in the next year, see what you can do, either Cladcorp or the commission or this magical third group that we're gonna come up with. See what you can do to acquire that hospital property and let's develop that into thirty-six units. Thirty-six units, so that's six units per acre. So the hospital is about six acres. When I do zoning regulations, the density we shoot for, for a medium density residential neighborhood is about six units per acre. So you could take your hospital property, which is six acres, see if you could fit six units per acre on there. That's thirty-six units and it could probably be a nice mix of single family and multifamily. Um, Clyde is a town nearby, right? That has some townhomes or some condos. We have those in Clyde. We don't have those in Concordia. That might be a place to try it. When we did your survey, vast majority of the people that took our survey were one and two person households. So if you are a two-person household and you're living in a four or five-bedroom unit, you're probably still in Concordia because you wanna be part of this community, but you don't really have any other options. So your hospital property would be a good place to experiment with some patio homes or some condos. And then another, um, project that I have on here for you guys to maybe replicate is over in, um, in Norton, they're trying something similar, um, but if they have folks that will sell their house, um, I don't know that it's necessarily earmarked for seniors or retiring seniors, but it's one and two-person households that don't need that big house anymore. At the time they sell their house, they get five thousand dollars at closing. And then we're hoping that they will be encouraged to go move into the one of, go, um, downgrade housing. So those two programs could possibly go hand in hand here in Concordia. You guys could get your hand, hands on some land where you could try this out. You could try a couple of condos and townhomes and then look into a smaller incentive program for people when they sell their house at the time of the sale. So those are a couple of examples. There's one other thing I wanna touch on, cause I don't know how you guys are gonna feel about it. Um, but Cloud, I've seen this now in several communities, these big industrial parks or business recruitment or business expansion parks, and I see that we have one of those here in Concordia. And I think it's highly ironic, a lot of these, I don't know when you guys got your park or when you developed it, but I know a lot of them came again in the early two thousands or the late nineties and they were supposed to be there to recruit industry or recruit business and they're still sitting there. And isn't it ironic that we need more houses or more employees so that we can recruit industry or recruit business? And we have these pieces of land. Now, where, where your land is sitting, I don't know that it's the best land for housing. I think that you would have to replat it and reconsider how it could work as a mixed use development. But I'm asking you to rethink about that large chunk of land and how you could use it towards this problem. Maybe you can't put housing right there, but maybe it's a resource for a land swap or there's a deal you can strike with somebody else that has some land that you would like. Maybe you can swap land that way. But I think that you need to consider your industrial park and the different uses you could do with it to try to work on this housing problem. Alright, that's it. That's your housing study. Those are my suggestions. Amy asked for it a week ago and I'm just getting into her now. So I, um, I am glad to make changes or amendments to you after you've had a chance to read it. Thank you Fuller for this last slide. This, these are my party words for you. Um, ten years ago, I found this quote. I was trying to do research. Um, there's a program that we offer for our Nebraska clients, uh, called vacant property registry actually. And, um, when I was researching, creating this program and setting it up, I came across this, uh, Federal Reserve speech. And, um, this woman's quote stuck with me for so long. Um, and it's, it's my party word that I wanna leave with you tonight, because everything that I'm asking you to do is gonna be costly. It might be costly politically, um, it's definitely gonna be costly from a time perspective. It's definitely gonna cost you some money. Um, but I, but what I wanted to remember is that, um, that Um, but I, but what I wanted to remember is that um, doubtless there will be costs associated with solving these problems. But it's important to also consider the cost of doing nothing. Ultimately, a policy of neglect will be just as or even more costly than finding and implementing constructive solutions. So I think that it wasn't fair, but a lot of our elected officials, our village board members in Nebraska, our village board members. Our city commission members, our city council members, um, in the eighties and in the nineties, I think that when they got on a board, um. Their one job was to not spend money, right? Whatever you do, do not raise our taxes and do not spend money. And I have sat through countless meetings and I bet if I sat through a couple of your meetings, I would see that these people paying the cost of doing nothing. From the nineties and the early two thousands, we have a lot of aged infrastructure, we have a lot of streets. And we have a lot of dilapidated housing that hasn't been maintained um, for decades now. Because we didn't wanna pay the cost. And so now I think, and even this housing situation, I think this is us right now paying the cost of doing nothing. So I want you to remember that, you already paid something, right? You paid for this paper, um, you paid for the ink on it and you paid for my blood sweat and here's that, that's in there. And now it's gonna cost you even a lot more money actually to do something with it, so.
What questions do you have for Bobby right now, or you guys just wanna digest? I think I need to request a few more hard copies, that you should have thought of for more members as well, so. What questions do you have right now?
What's the solution? So we got a hundred vacant lots and we got a hundred houses that are empty, right? Basically, a little bit more than that. On the vacant lots, Bruno, how many can we build on right now? Cause you, you gotta hold it for five years, who made that rule?
Not, not all of them, just the ones where we use the CBPG funds and that's a federal head rule, so we have to wait five years. Yeah, but there are some that were taken out with local demolition money and voluntarily as well, so. Yes, yes, from the old ones, yeah. So those are the things that, that we probably talk about with that task force, um, they're just talking about creating and solutions there.
There's a couple of policies I have on the strategic plan, so one policy I think um, in your, from a zoning perspective. Or maybe a policy on those lots that you've cleared, um, for now. Maybe a building moratorium on those lots, I don't wanna see those lots that you've cleared turn into she sheds and man caves and. Um, storage units, I think you need a policy where you can, um, and you have a land bank, right? Concordia has a land bank, those lots I think probably need to get into your land bank or. Um, they need to be preserved, moratorium on building permits on those lots. Until you figure out what you wanna do with them, because you don't wanna lose those, you don't wanna lose that inventory.
Anyone?
Yeah, I'm just saying, probably not even know what city.
Yeah, no cost to the owner, but the, the money comes from, through heads, from the feds and that's their rule, that's not our rule. When I read that rule, I told them it was gonna eliminate several people out of the program and it did. Because their main reason for wanting to take the house down next door is to build the man cave or the big garage or the.
The pool.
Or the swimming pool.
But you said you only have fourteen of those, only fourteen of those lots are, you can't do anything with them because it's CBPG.
And then the last, since oh seven, we pushed a hundred house, living on ground, which under our.
Yeah.
And, and the eighty-six that are empty are not owned by the city? They're owned by private people?
The city only owns two residential lots, that's all, all is in the land bank, the rest of them are on private ownership.
How do you build a house a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars right now with the cost of building materials?
I don't think you do without uh, without some extra money, without some sort of incentive.
I think that's where we look to about sixty-two million dollars that the state has infused into various housing programs. And that's where we need to look at those programs to see what might fit us well. And that, that'll be work that Nikki and I can do over the next couple of weeks. Um, from the meeting that we had with Department of Commerce a couple of weeks ago. September thirtieth is the first grant deadline for some of those funds. And so we need to work hard and fast with this information to see if any of those are applicable. Come back to you all and get that permission to, to move forward and there's some other, um, if we wanted to move forward, because we just talked about. We have to go visit this property unit within that timeframe too, so there's, there's a lot of work to be done here.
Jesse, I would say like this uh, spring and I guess January was interesting to listen to that, this program kinda come about. Because colleagues that are maybe in Johnson County and Shawnee County would just say to me, oh, well, the market will take care of it. And just like she said, the market has kinda failed us, because they have a million developers who can snap these things out real quick and they can bring that cost down. We don't have that, and so it was hard to kind of explain that to people. Um, and they think this is another like welfare program for rural America, you know, you, we hear that all the time, but whatever. We have it and so it's a tool now and we can move forward.
I think, I think what Bobby had said too is kind of important, we know from talking with developers that our local developers are incredibly busy. They've got backlogs two to three years deep. And so having the time and probably liquidity to be able to invest in speculation homes, which is basically kind of what we're talking about that we might need. May not be there for them. And then we have larger developers that we've talked with from out of state that are looking for some investment property, but they're apprehensive to invest in us. Because our building permit numbers over the last decade have been so low, they don't wanna take that risk. So I think if we do something with this group and we show them that it can be done and we pop those numbers up, then I think we may spur some more private investments. So I do think it's important for us to take advantage of it, be able to at least try for it.
I think the other thing to think about is some of these hundred houses. And I can make sure for them off the top of my head, might not need to be demoed, they just need to be repaired. That doesn't cost near as much as demoing, putting new sticks up, so.
I think that like back to your thing is you guys, somebody, one of you is gonna have to be the risk taker. And show a developer that you can come to Concordia, you can build houses and you can sell them. Especially because you're not that far from Salina, right? So why would I come up to Concordia, this little town? It's never built, really built houses in the last four years and I can just keep throwing them up in Salina. So you're going to have to figure out, someone, someone in here is gonna have to be the risk taker to start, to get it started.
I read somewhere that it's not a, it's not, you know, they often talk about leadership being the first person to take action. And they said it's not only is it important for the first person to take actions, the second person to start calling it up. So definitely need to take that step and then others to see that it works, make it really happen. And I, I think that it can, I think it's the number to show that and support that. And I think like you said, you provided us a lot of really good information that we, we knew. But now we have something that's other than just my thoughts, my opinion, my information. I think that that's the validation and the information, uh, I think is a remarkable tool that we can use, especially with some of the tools that are coming out. That we can uh, apply that to and start really, give some traction. So I, I really appreciate, and I also appreciate uh, moving it up on your timeline, knowing that we have some of these applications ahead of us. Uh, so I definitely appreciate expediting that process and we have this information, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. You guys have been wonderful to work with, I hope you think of more stuff to do so I can come back any time.
I hope so too.
Chuck, that's a great point, because how do we solve a problem if we don't have any of the data? Now we have the data in here and now it's up to us to figure out how we solve the problem.
I think it's worse.
Well, the powers that be at Department of Commerce, they're not gonna, they're not gonna review your grant application because you put in there. Well, everybody in Concordia knows that we don't have enough houses, they wanna see something a little.
Right.
But thanks for providing something other than a box check, you know?
Yes.
We have to check the box, but this is very.
You're welcome, yep. Well, thank you for having me and thank you for waiting and good luck. Nothing else on the agenda, I'd look for a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Put a motion in a second to adjourn, guy?
Aye.
All those opposed, we're adjourned, thank you.